Good evening, everyone. I'd like to reconvene the November 4th Board of Supervisor Regular Meeting. At this time, we had no closed meeting. And next on the agenda is our public hearings. We have three this evening. And for the public hearings, we do one at a time. And if you wish to speak during the public hearing, it's for that particular hearing. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing for SE number 24-03-04, Potomac Appalachian Trail TM 19-1-7 Tourist Home.
Madam Chair, would it be okay if we got just a little advanced context before the hearing? I mean, what the application is?
I think we normally do with Michelle.
Okay.
Yep.
I just didn't know if we had to do that before you actually opened the hearing.
Normally you do.
Before the hearing part. Yes, ma'am. Thank you, sir.
The Potomac Appalachian Trail Club has applied for special exception for a tourist home pursuant to 17036E and 17066K for their property located at 120 Mount Marshall Road, tax map number 19-1-7, which is approximately 32 acres in size and its own conservation. They plan to use this cabin for their club members only. The cabin is a one-room cabin. The Health Department commented in June that a report from an OSC revealed that the septic tank and distribution box had some issues. They recommended that repairs needed to be done. Once those repairs were completed in July, the applicant sent over the necessary paperwork to the Health Department. The Health Department records show the septic system is permitted for three bedrooms, 450 gallons per day, six-person maximum occupancy limit. Their comments of August 21st stated that all repairs have been completed and now meets all proper standards. Therefore, they recommended approval of the application. Vida had no objections to this request. Based on field observation, the existing access meets the Vida private entrance standard and stopping distance is adequate. The Planning Commission held their public hearing on this application at their September 18th meeting. After hearing from the public, they moved to recommend approval with the following conditions. One, that the applicant submits a letter that the appropriate authority stating that they have reviewed the application submitted and they support the application and authenticate it, which that has been received and shared with everyone on Board docs. And two, staff recommended conditions of a maximum of one bedroom, two adults and accompanying children, no food service to be offered to the renters of the facility, the permit terminates upon sale or transfer of the property, and the property may not be sublease rented by a third party or used as a timeshare. This has been advertised twice in the local newspaper pursuant to 15.22204, and representatives for the trail club are present for any questions.
We want to allow the applicant to speak first?
Yes.
Any general input from the PATC? Just start us off?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is John Hedrick. I'm a resident of Rappahannock County. Mrs. Smith is my supervisor. I'm also an elected officer in Potomac Appalachian Trail Club, and I also volunteer to drive an ambulance for Sperryville Rescue. The, just a brief comment about Potomac Appalachian Trail Club. We're almost 100 years old. We'll be, we were chartered in 1927. We're 501(c)(3). We're registered in the state of Virginia. The, we, our mission originally in 1927 was to build and maintain the Appalachian Trail, which is a national scenic trail, which is a part of Rappahannock County. That, we did that, and over a period of time, our mission has changed and grown. Now that we maintain about 1,100 miles of trail, we also maintain the overnight shelters for overnight hikers in four states, as well as the District of Columbia. And we also do quite a bit of work in terms of land conservation. We've purchased property, and we also deal with removal of invasive species. We provide generally for Shenandoah National Park. This last year, we provided over 20,000 hours of free labor. All of our work is free. We don't charge anything for it. Our total amount for this last year over all the four states and the district was about 40,000 volunteer hours. The cost to maintain all of our equipment, chainsaws, weeders, and all the things that go into maintaining trails and to maintain cabins and so forth, we take, that money generally comes from rental from our cabins. And that leads me to the Horwitz Cabin, which is why we're here today. The Horwitz Cabin, I think it's important to note that this is a member-only cabin. In other words, to rent this cabin, you have to be a member of Potomac Appalachian Trail Club. That means that you're in our database. We know who you are. We've got some information about you. And we also require renters to submit a conditional, a condition report when they exit. If you want to rent the Horwitz Cabin, the only way you can do it is to go online and to access the Potomac Appalachian Trail Club website. We do not advertise anyplace else. So you can do that online through our internal system, and then you get the keys and the necessary documentation. With that, I'd like to ask Sue is, Sue and Neil are the maintainers of the Horwitz Cabin. Sue?
Thank you. I'm Sue Eisenfeld, and my husband Neil Heinekamp and I have been volunteers, taking care of this cabin for the last 10 years. Before that, we actually rented the cabin from the previous owner. So we've been there a lot of years. We've been Rappahannock hikers and weekenders since 1992, so, and like John said, he's a resident here. So together, we have a great interest in this county. We have a stake in this county, even though Neil and I actually live in Arlington. We're pleased that Vida, the Health Department, the Planning Commission, and zoning staff have essentially agreed with approval of this permit, and we appreciate that the county recognizes the benefit of land zone for conservation being cared for by a nonprofit land conservation organization whose members are also land conservation-minded, and that's who stays there. We have a cabin journal that people fill out when they stay, and they write about what they do here. And so these people are tourists here, and they're hikers, you know, they're going to the wineries, they're eating at the restaurants, and partaking of everything that's great about this county. As was mentioned, we have cured the issues that were brought up at the last meeting by the public and others, such as changing the occupancy limits and having the letter from the president. And so I just wanted to put a face to this organization. Neil and I are the dedicated cabin caretakers. We only take care of this cabin, and we have an entire cadre of volunteers behind us if we need anything that we can't do to take care of it and to take care of the land. We also hire people. We actually, you know, pay electricians and others when things need to be done that none of us are able to do. So we're here tonight just to answer any other questions you might have and to demonstrate our commitment to remain good neighbors as we have been. We've had no neighbor complaints over the last 10 years, and we're happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. At this time, I'll open the public hearing for the Potomac Appalachian Trail Club. Anyone wishing to speak on this public hearing, please be recognized when you come up. Give us your name and the district you're in.
Good evening. My name is Karen Hunt. I live in Jackson District. I want to thank the PATC for the copious amounts of volunteer work that they do to help maintain the Appalachian Trail. I threw height in 2001, and it is the longest contiguous footpath in the world. People from all over the world come to hike this trail. I do want to just mention that there is some conflicting information about the septic, which was raised by a neighbor at the Planning Commission meeting during the public testimony. The Virginia Department of Health letter dated April 24th of '24 stated they were not able to locate any current or historical septic or well records for the property. It also noted that construction receipts from 1980 indicated a 1,500-gallon septic, while documentation from All-Star Septic dated 2015 indicated the tank is more in the 500 to 700-gallon range. The private OSB report from May 23 estimated the septic tank, again, at 1,500 gallons, but the VDH letter dated June 26 of '24 now says their file indicates the septic system is permitted for a three-bedroom, six-person maximum occupancy limit, which would be a 900-gallon tank. It should be noted that the Commissioner of Revenue Records have the property listed as a two-bedroom, one-bath dwelling. The staff report reflects the Planning Commission recommendation of two adults and accompanying children, and this was an effort to accommodate the applicant's request, but it doesn't actually specify a maximum number of occupants. However, the Health Department calculates septic capacity based on two persons per bedroom. And Emily Bordone, who is the Registered Environmental Health Specialist Supervisor, said a person is a person. There's no separate definition of or calculation for a child or children with the Health Department. Further, we do not have a specific definition of children in our ordinance. The only mention I found was in Article 4 with regard to family subdivisions and assessing family relationships. That would be Section 147-36. And Article 6 with regard to preschool, daycare centers, and nursery schools, and that would be Section 170-63. The standard definition for child that I found is anywhere between infancy and puberty, and for UNICEF, it's any person under the age of 18. And then there's a whole range of stuff in between there. It's noted in the application that the property has been a PATC asset since 2014 and has been rented to members for quite some time as accommodating six people. While I recognize the Planning Commission's attempt to accommodate the applicant because they requested concessions for children, I suggest we need to be consistent in how we ultimately make decisions, and definitions are important. I spent a good amount of time reviewing all the special exceptions and special use approved tourist home permits from 2022 through June of 2024. I provided the board with a list. I found only one recorded instance for a permit that refers to children, and that was approved in September 6 of '23. And it's baffling because the Virginia Department of Health letter states the septic capacity for that particular application was one bedroom, and what was ultimately approved was not in compliance with the Health Department occupancy limits. I did find two instances where permits were approved for more than two persons per bedroom, but in accordance with the VDH septic capacity, and three instances where approval was for less than two persons per bedroom, again, in accordance with the septic capacity. The overwhelming majority of approvals all reflect the two persons per bedroom rule. There is a pretty big disparity between a three-bedroom, six-person, and a five-bedroom, 10-person capacity with regard to septic. And the five-bedroom, 10-person is what a 1,500-gallon septic tank is. And while I'm not a septic expert, I did do a little research on this, and the septic tank capacity should be able to be estimated by obtaining accurate tank dimensions. So something is off here. I guess it's possible, but I think it would be pretty unlikely if a one-bedroom cabin built in 1973 installed a five-bedroom septic tank. So that being said, I'm not quite sure how the Health Department got from nothing in the file to the three-bedroom, six-person, but I would suggest this really needs to be resolved before a decision is made, since it's kind of a critical thing. The occupancy limit should be established based on number of persons to align with the Health Department definition without muddying the water, pun intended, with reference to adults and children. I would ask that the board seek a more definitive information about the septic to determine if it is a two-bedroom or three-bedroom capacity, but I would be very surprised if it is a five-bedroom capacity. Thank you.
Thank you. Not seeing anyone, and there's no one on Zoom. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing part of this and opening up to the board.
Madam Chair, this is in the voting district that I represent, and I'm pleased to say that I know the cabin overseers, who I haven't seen in a long, long time. So this is a treat to cross paths with Neil and Sue tonight. As I was reacquainting myself with them, I was reminded I spent a really awesome New Year's Eve in the Horwitz Cabin. I should mention, and correct me if I'm wrong, the Horwitz name is, goes to the author, Tony Horwitz, who wrote the book Confederates in the Attic. Yeah, so there's some literary fame tied to that location. It's really an awesome place, and Sue and Neil, I know from before it was turned over to PATC care, took incredible care of that place. It's at the end of Mount Marshall Road. I don't believe I've heard any opposition from any of the handful of people who live on Mount Marshall Road. Mount Marshall Road is gravel, as most people know. Traffic generally is very local. People travel slowly. The cabin is a fantastic asset. It's nearly adjacent to the Mount Marshall Trailhead. And frankly, as I was listening to this discussion and thinking about it as a tourist home, I recognized that that's kind of the category falls into. If we had more of these type cabins that were tied to PATC oversight, I could almost see some kind of carve-out for them, because this is precisely the kind of short-term lodging use that we really should encourage in our county. I trust that the VDH offered an opinion on the capacity of the septic vis-à-vis whatever the proposed occupancy is. Michelle, what are those, what's the occupancy number that's contemplated here? And what did the VDH say in summary?
VDH said 450 gallons, six-person maximum occupancy, and they were requesting two adults and accompanying children.
Okay. So it sounds, and what's the typical, what's the typical size of a group that uses the Horwitz Cabin?
There's only, there's only one double bed, and a futon, and a set of bunk beds. So if you want to sleep comfortably, two adults, three adults, I mean, two adults, four children.
Got it.
There have been probably in the past up to six adults. That would be very tight. However, even if there were six adults, which is not on the table now, it still meets the size of the septic as the Health Department has defined it.
Okay. And so I guess my other question is on the revenue front. So for some years, this has been operating as what we would call a tourist home under the county zoning ordinance. And I think I heard that there's now, that you're going to, that the PATC is going to pay for past lodging taxes. How, is there like some retro, retrospective?
We don't know yet, because the manager of revenue won't really talk to us until you've got some.
Oh, I see. Okay. All right.
So they know we're there. We've already touched base with them.
Okay.
They said as soon as you get the permit, come on.
So we're either the chicken or the egg in that scenario. Okay. Sure, yeah.
Although in the past, it has been allowed to be operated by six adults at one time, the cabin is never booked seven nights of every week. It's usually only booked on the weekends during the colder season.
Yeah.
Or anyone uses it in the summer, because it doesn't have air conditioning.
Right.
So the occupancy is probably at 50% or 60% as of now, and only in certain places.
Yeah.
And looking at the journal, if I can, looking at the journal, it's usually a couple, a couple of kids, sometimes two buddies or three buddies.
Father, son.
Yeah. Father, son.
Okay.
Yeah. That's it.
Are there, are there any other, I don't, off the top of my head, I can't think of any other PATC cabins that are in Rappahannock County but outside of the Shenandoah National Park? Okay. Yeah. So this is really a unique, very unique property. Okay, that's all I have.
My only question is, the repairs that were recommended, they were or were not done? I don't.
From the Health Department?
Yep.
You know, what I read, it suggests that they were done.
We reviewed it with the Planning Commission, and the assessment from Jenkins Water and Sewer Repair states that the distribution box and header line look to be in good condition. There was one neighbor that came and spoke about that and voiced some concerns at the Planning Commission level. He was, ironically enough, also a PATC member. And so I left it to the family members to work it out amongst themselves and review that detail if they were so inclined. Seemed to be the sensible way to go. We did discuss it, and it was reviewed.
So I am curious, why not just say six people? Being someone who, my son does bring buddies on vacation, and just accompanying children, you know, if I went on vacation and took all of my kid, all of my friends' buddies, it would exceed six. I'm just curious about that word choice. Why not just six?
It's really based on bedrooms and adults.
Was that a VDH recommendation?
The Health Department stated that it was a three-bedroom, six-person with issues, but then the issues were resolved.
Okay. So the Planning, is this the Planning Commission?
Well, generally, one bedroom is two adults.
This is one big room with, the only room inside is a bathroom.
If you're going to be, if you're going to do this for this property, we're going to have to start doing this across the board, allowing more adults per sleeping room than we currently do. Or we'll have to find some way to justify the decision. And the understanding at the Planning Commission was that we felt that this was something that all parties could live with, and the applicants were amenable to, understanding that our zoning ordinance is important, and we try to abide by it, not just for their application, but to hold water for future applications. So that's how we arrived at the numbers.
And this did come up from a citizen letter about two adults per room. That is not a requirement of the ordinance. Just want to be clear. It is a requirement that you can impose if you so wish within the ordinance. It's optional. And that, that was, my understanding from when it was codified, was an intent to put restrictions on the party sort of thing. Okay? We have two people renting it, but I've invited 15 of my closest friends for the evening.
Right. So like, you know, the difference with this permit here is that we have oversight, which is the PATC, which is different than just a tourist home that doesn't have that. And so my question was, why the two with the kids? And it seems to be, not arbitrary, but it does seem to be just something that is now pegged to a bedroom?
Well, I mean, if you're inclined to increase the number associated with a small building, relatively small building, I mean, then we're going to get more and more applications requesting more sleeping allowances.
So where did you end up? And were you okay with where the Planning Commission ended up? I guess that's a key question.
We ended up with what's on the vote sheet, with, you know, two adults and accompanying children.
Okay.
So we would prefer, this is, that all through this, the PATC has listed it as a six-person occupancy.
I see.
Because that's how many, how much sleeping room it was.
Yeah.
We would prefer to continue that, but we also understand the predicament.
What's it?
So that was, last time we met, that was the, we were willing to go with that.
One way to think about this building, because roughly, if my memory is correct, around 350, 400 square feet of space. Okay, so it's a small building. It could have walls, and, I mean, it could have walls. There's a futon, and there's a bed, and there's a bunk bed. It doesn't have walls, okay, so it could be like six people sleep there, but it's also a living room, dining room, a kitchen, all in one, just to paint a picture.
Six-person efficiency suite.
Exactly.
Is there, I mean, so on the, just not to beat a dead horse, but on the VDH septic capacity, it would accommodate six? I think, I mean, I would, let's just, let's move this along and see where we end up. I would, I would move to approve special exception permit application 24-03-04 with the following condition, that occupancy be limited to six people, which is consistent with how the applicant previously has been advertising, and any other, any other conditions that the Planning Commission imposed through their discussion.
I'll second.
A motion and a second discussion?
So I think, go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify. The other conditions are no food service will be offered to renters of this facility, and the permanent permit terminates on sale or transfer of the property, and the property may not be sublease rented or by a third party or used as a timeshare.
So I think my comfortability with this is that this is not a permit we typically see. This is a, there's a distinguishing factor here, which is that there's a charitable organization running this that has oversight in a way that none of the other tourist homes that we've done do. So I would agree with you, Ms. Smith, in the sense that if this were a private landowner that were saying, hey, we have this, you know, basically a big room, I think that would be different. Here, I think that I feel, would feel comfortable, given the history with what they're doing and the fact that they're only renting to members. There's, there's a lot of accountability there that naturally does not come with other permits. So I would feel comfortable with that.
I'm not going to jam up this application, but I would submit that we see more and more of these applications submitted by professional management companies. And if we've made this allowance for a nonprofit organization, I think those professional companies will expect the same courtesy. So if y'all are opening the door, I will walk through it with you, but we do have to acknowledge that this is a new saturation that we are allowing.
I think if you want to make a hard and fast rule about rooms and peg it, I think that would be more administrable than just kind of going, this is a really different application. This is just a management company that runs a commercial enterprise. This is not a commercial enterprise. It's owned by 501(c)(3), which is different. It's a nonprofit. So that's the distinguishing factor here. A management company from Luray is not the PATC, in my.
I kind of thought that they shouldn't have to apply for a permit in the first place. So like I said, I'm not going to jam them up.
That's how I feel, too.
You know, as easy as we are with special events for 501(c)(3) organizations, they could have a perpetual campout and keep the money for all that I care. So I am certainly not going to jam up this organization. But I do, I do just wonder about, you know, people will want to be able to have more overnight guests because they will be able to drive up a price point. And that's not the case here. I'm certainly not suggesting that's the case here. But for your typical application, we may see that.
Well, and I just want to be clear. I asked the why not six, because it was, it was vague. If I rented this place and took Mason and all of his buddies, I could end up there with 15 teenage boys.
Roy, you can't. You can't. No, but I mean.
You're not a member.
I just was uncomfortable with the vague, the vagueness.
If it's, if it's six, the way I look at it is, first of all, I know that you've been overseeing it for a decade and a half. Number, what's that?
A decade.
A decade, okay. On top of it, it's basically a one-room cabin. It's run by the PATC. You successfully publicized it for six, because it's basically, it's essentially camping out, is what it is. And having rented PATC
And, and having, having rented P A T C cabins, I don't know how mu, how many people the Corbin cabin sleeps, but whether, you know, it's, I mean, it's the same scenario. It's a little, a little fancier. And to me, it just seems like it's saying six people and operating that way with this application. I can, I feel like we can defend that because it was this particular property, which is effectively indoor camping for hikers.
And they're right. If the Health Department's saying six-person maximum, when the Health Department, at least with me, with the tavern, it was a daily expectation of 30 people or 40 people or whatever. This cabin, I'm sure you would love to have it rented out every day, but the likelihood of that's pretty slim. So I'm comfortable with that as well. All right, if, all, no, we don't. All is in favor? I say aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for taking such great care of that area, too. Thanks for keeping those trails clean.
Yes. All right. The next public hearing on the agenda is the Diaz and Ruiz TM number 30-8P. Michelle?
Thank you. Pursuant to 17036A and 17062G, an application has been filed for an accessory dwelling unit for the applicant's property located at 177 Ridgeview Lane, which is 25 acres in size and zoned agricultural. The proposed A D U is for their son to reside in. It is 1,200, it's proposed to be 1,200 square feet with one to two bedrooms. B.com commented that the property being, is being served by an existing private insurance on a private road and they have no objections or concerns. The Health Department commented that it appears a private soil scientist has designed a sewage system and located a proposed well site for the property. When they are ready to begin construction, they will just need to submit the appropriate paperwork to their office to get those permits. The existing septic is approved for four bedrooms and I believe that the house, the main house that they're currently building is a two-bedroom home. The Planning Commission held their public hearing on this application on September the 18th and after hearing from the public voted to recommend approval with a condition that the A D U cannot apply for construction permits until the existing home under construction, the main dwelling, is completed and an occupancy permit has been issued. This has been advertised twice in the local newspaper pursuant to 15.22204 and the applicants are present if anyone has any questions.
Thank you. Would you like to come up and speak to them?
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Antonio Diaz. I've been a resident of the Rappahannock County for nearly four years now, along with my wife Sue and my son Marcus. We're basically submitting this special exception so that Marcus and his wife, they got recently married. I got to say that, and actually lived the property. I don't have much more to add to that, but I don't know if my wife Sue really has something to say. It's going to take a little bit of time, so.
Madame Chair and also the committee as well, thank you for allowing me to speak today. And thank you for the government official as well, for all the work that you do every day in here. It's remarkable coming into this small county and the dedication as well. So I have few things to go over today. We submitted this permit as my husband alluded to. We have a son that we really want to get into family. Not going for him to another county. I really want to preserve the family like what was before, back in the days, that get all unified. And when we moved to Rappahannock, we found in love with this county and also to actually achieve that with our family. At the septic, when we design our drawings, we actually have a soil scientist to get. We don't want to segregate. We just want to give that in the future for him. And, and we designed it in a way that it will prove that we will actually have a septic that will serve him and also a well that also have those two houses together as a, as not division for segregation in, in land. So we don't want to do that. When we found Rappahannock to be very specific on a regulation to actually not segregate, we fall in love as well because we grew up, I grew up on a farm and my parents were very peculiar to actually have all together in one single land and not develop. It's, it's something that is our wish to do and also a future of my, our baby as well. And we expand to get here for probably many, many years until we pass retirement as well. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, at this time, I will open the public hearing for SC 24-05-04. Anyone wishing to speak, let's keep it to five minutes per speaker and be recognized and come up and give us your district.
Good evening, supervisors. Thank you for this opportunity to address this application. My name's Carl Brotsman. I live at 291 Ridgeview Lane. That's the most easterly house on Ridgeview Lane. I'm asking you all in person now to deny the application. I sent three emails to everyone. Thank you Supervisor Smith for responding and Van as well to those acknowledging receipt. I want to paint a picture in your minds. The property has been a pine forest for years before my wife and I purchased it in 1999 from Gene Wonderlich. Gene Wonderlich was around in the 90s, he was a, 70s, excuse me. He was a strategic economist. He wrote several papers and books on rural property and things like that and bought our place from him. To fix it, this is the time that the Planning Commission, not the Planning Commission, but the Comprehensive Plan really came into, into being. You know, with the, with the ideas of preserving the county, the natural beauty, while recognizing the economic importance of agriculture and things like that. The people around them really paid attention to what it was that they were trying to preserve and they were vocal and successful at doing it. So going back to Ridgeview Lane, the pine forest for at least our time and probably 20 years before has been a pine forest right to the edge of Ridgeview Lane. You know, so you have 12-inch stumps, right? 12 or 15 feet, you know, part and things like that with an understory that was rich in your usual forest things like, you know, autumn olive, poison ivy, you know, your usual stuff, the occasional pretty dogwood. But it was a pine forest right to Ridgeview Lane, right to the edge, okay? The only exception being the R E C easement that runs through there. So in the olden days, right, if you go back 10 years, R E C wasn't nearly as meticulous in doing their, you know, your power line easement maintenance as they are today. But anyway, every once in a while, they'd come through and they'd, they'd clear it, right? And one of the pictures that I have that I sent you all, you know, shows the power line easement sort of section off to the right. And you might think that that's saying that the, the forest didn't go to Ridgeview Lane. My point is, there has never been an access to the Ridgeview Lane and I have a pocketful of photos that show that. The, the access that was installed, was installed coincident with this application for an additional dwelling unit. There's no, there's no ambiguity with that at all. The only ambiguity came from Commissioner Henry, you know, suggesting that the county doesn't have a definition for the word exists. You know, what does, what does the word exists mean? And he even said that, well, it could mean that it existed the day before. Well, if you believe that, then it is. However. So I went through the, you know, Rappahannock County has no G I S, right? And, you know, I know G I S and it's the only county in the state that has no G I S. And it's amazing, as far as the data access capability, it's sort of like structured query language, you know? If you go to a database, it's great to have a tool that gives you a return, you know, that, that, that filters the data to something that's immediately usable. In any event, so for tax map 30, which is Ridgeview Lane, and I don't know which one of you went and looked at the tax map, but someone did. You know, you know that the index map for tax map 30, it's not even a cartogram, you know what I mean? It gives clue, clues about adjacency, but you can't just look at the thing and say, oh, this is Ridgeview Lane. So if you're trying to validate the statement, there were 18 parcels on this, you know, Lindgren drowning farm subdivision sort of thing. You couldn't just do that by looking at the index map. You couldn't just do that by looking at a G I S. You'd have to go through, go to the court, pull out the Platts, piece them together manually, you know, and figure it out. After you figured out the Platts and who were adjacent and things like that, then you could trundle off to the commissioner of the revenue, find out what the tax address was of the neighbors and then go and ask them what their opinion is, you know, on this particular thing. I'm addressing now the notion that there hasn't been nearly enough notification of neighbors, right? Neighbors aren't just adjacent properties that were incorrectly identified on the application as belonging to tax map 30. They were tax map 30 and then the, you know, the particular, particular plant. Going back to this, so the deal is, is this is precedent-setting in the county as far as an additional dwelling unit on a 25-acre parcel because I went through the records, going back through board docs, you know, and it's miserable searching through those things the way you have to search, going through board meetings and things like that, looking through the agendas of individual items, then going through the minutes of those things to see what was being decided. In any event, I came up with a list that I passed you all as an Excel spreadsheet and I found 11 parcels, you know, since 2015. Board docs sort of disappears around 2015, you know, and the quality of the documentation that there is is really, really sparse. In any event, these 11 documents are all, they all assert that this present application is really unique with respect to additional dwelling units. Some of the things about it is, it's an upside-down notion of generational living. I think that Tony and Sue and Marco came out and worked, worked at our place.
A minute.
Thank you. That's really, that's fast. So I knew I was going to babble, so I have three seasons.
I thought I'd let you know.
But the bottom line is it's an upside-down generational living. The other cases of A D Us that have been accepted, there's been something there. There's a family, extended family history. There are structures that are maybe, a barn is being converted to an A D U or another thing's going to be built. This is, they're starting from scratch. They're starting from scratch with a, give me two dwelling units on 25 acres. They're saying, give me two dwelling units on 25 acres in an ag area that's three-quarters of a mile off of the secondary road. These other 11 things that I just referred to, they're all either on secondary roads or they're on a driveway that exits, an exclusive use driveway that exits immediately onto a secondary road. Let me suggest to you that what you're doing is, you're creating a rental unit because there's no looking glass that says that Marco is in fact going to live there. He may do something else when he marries. His wife may want to do something else. And it's wonderful to have that notion, but it may not be reality. So what you do get is you get two dwelling units per acre. It's a fire hazard.
Thank you.
Thank you for, for that opportunity.
Thank you for all the information.
I sent you a letter, so I'm guessing that you read it.
Thank you, Carl.
Thank you.
I've got some, you know. Adjacency maps and I have five, so I can see there's.
Yeah, I can share, I can share with you.
Five of us. Five supervisors.
Make sure you get it for the five when you're done.
Thank you.
Thank you, dear.
I am Maureen Moran. I'm from the Hampton District. My husband, George Robinson, and I own two parcels that are adjacent to the applicant's property. The adjacencies are shown there. We have a home at 200 Ridgeview outlined in red and an undeveloped property across the road at 183 Ridgeview, which we purchased last year to ensure Ridgeview Lane's stability and tranquility. George and I, we are opposed to the special exception application. George and I have been frequently visiting Ridgeview Lane since 1982. We had friends that owned 150 Ridgeview Lane, which is directly across the road from 177. We actually in fact spent our honeymoon there 40 years ago in November of 1984.
Happy anniversary.
That would be November 10th, so that could be documented. We've walked Ridgeview Lane hundreds of times. There was no driveway that existed into the tree farm until this year. The applicant did not contact us about the pending application and we are still puzzled why we weren't informed. When we found out about the application, we had already made travel plans that unfortunately precluded us from being able to attend the Planning Commission hearing. So we sent a letter to the Planning Commission before the September meeting and there were some concerns that we listed that we didn't see addressed at the meeting. And I'll go through each one of those and they are directly related to the application. Our first one, 170-52A, it refers to the nature and extent of screening, buffering and landscaping. The answer in the application indicates that the A D U is in an open field surrounded by wooded areas with limited visibility from surrounding residences. We think that the house in sight are very exposed and visible to the road and adjacent sites. The application does not include any plans for screening, buffering, fencing or landscaping. 170-52B, anticipated traffic in the neighborhood and streets. The answer was planned. Use is for one family and one licensed driver. The A D U building plans indicate a one-bedroom, two-bath, but the first floor has two small rooms labeled as office and game room, which would easily be converted to Virginia requirements as bedrooms two and three. We think that a three-bedroom, two-bath structure will easily support more than one licensed driver and visitors. This will add to more activity on the road and repairs. We want to know if there's any restrictions on renting this A D U and how this would be enforced. 170-52I, the proposed use does not cause undue impact on the historic and scenic qualities of the immediate area. The answer listed in this section is N/A. We disagree. The house in sight are now very exposed and visible to the road and adjacent neighbors. The contrast of this property to other properties is unlike other properties on our road. 170-53, number nine, is concerning the timing of the development. So the construction disturbance on the first house started more than two years ago. Collectively, our patience has been commendable. Everyone on Ridgeview Lane has reservations about the pace of construction. The negative aspects during construction have been increasingly challenging with extended work stoppages. Adding the proposed A D U to the schedule will continue this disorder. An additional comment is that during construction, there's been a travel trailer on the property that exists to this day. I listed this concern in the letter that I sent to the Planning Commission and I followed up with a, a letter to Michelle. So far, the issue has been ignored or I haven't really gotten a response. I'd appreciate if somebody would respond to that and address whether the travel trailer is planned to remain during the A D U construction. Again, thank you for your attention to our comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, young lady, it's my better half. I'm George Robinson. Like she said, I've been coming to Ridgeview Lane since 1982. I was a young man. I was 30 years old. I'm 70 now. So we're all in. We're still here. A little bit about myself, I'm a trustee. We make grants to numerous nonprofits here in the county. We have two parcels of land. We recently put an addition on. We recently put an addition on. We're all in, as is most of my neighbors. A little bit about Ridgeview Lane, it's a mile and a half, one way in, one way out. There's no turnarounds. It's about one car width wide. Maybe a little bit in some places, more, a little less. If you meet somebody on the road, someone has to call uncle. Either they back up or they're driving on another person's property to get around. This is common. There's five culverts. Three of the culverts have feeder streams that run constantly underneath of them. During severe rainstorms, the road is often breached. We've replaced culverts, the road has been closed, on and on and on. Why do you live in a private lane? Well, that's one of the reasons I bought. Private lane, Rappahannock County, one house for 25 acres, I'm all in. Privacy, tranquility, noise, traffic, signage, all gone. We're not headed that direction. All right. I invested here in 2003. In 2023, when we bought our second parcel. Both of them are adjacent to the applicant. The reasons, single private lane, we love the gravel road, no traffic, privacy, one house for 25 acres, quiet wildlife restrictions, on and on and on. And I think that's why all the other neighbors are on Ridgeview Lane. And the emphasis is Ridgeview, private lane. We're not like Long Mountain Road, which is a state road. We shovel, we maintain the road, we cut bushes back so you can drive through. We don't have signage, directing traffic, traffic measurements. That's why we like it. That's the way we'd like to keep it. That's the way it's always been. It was like that in 82, when I first introduced. The construction journey. You can look at the maps, you can read the paperwork, you can cite the codes, but the reality is, it's been going on, this is the third year coming up. All right? What was the journey to get there? First, it was a pine forest. We cut down hundreds of trees to what the abbot said, he was going to build a modest home in the woods and leave a small footprint. What we have is scorched earth landscaping, erosion. He wants to add an ADU, a garage, on and on and on. We have a travel trailer, and we have an outhouse. Okay, the last two have been there going on three years, okay? And what we have left is resemblance of all the timber they took down. We have a timber yard in the back of the property stacked up feet after feet after feet. It looks like a lumberyard. Okay, again, actions speak louder than words. Small footprint, that's up to you. So we have a, you know, those are what we're living with right now. There's a rental house right above him. I think the address is 163. That was built with good intentions, built for someone's mother. Mother passed away, life happens. It became a rental, okay? The last rental we had, he cut in two driveways, and he caused erosion that Ridgeview Lane will live with forever. And I have pictures to show that I can pass out. He just cut two driveways in. I don't know how he got approval for it. And we're still living with it. And it is a mess. Now, doesn't seem that important. If you drive off the road by accident, you see a deer, you have a flat tire, or you're calling a tow truck. In terms of emergency vehicles, rescue, people needing medical assistance, if there's snow on the ground, you don't see that. You drive right into it. One of these culverts, the three culverts out of the five, the drop off is two and a half, three feet, maybe deeper with water. I put a bumper on one of them. The fire chief personally wrote me a letter and thanked me and said, you know, coming here at night, we wouldn't have seen that. We very well could have driven off the road. And the rescuee could have been in trouble. The fire truck is halfway overturned. So it's the width of a car. Okay. All right, this has turned into a permanent, almost ongoing construction site. Okay, and now he's applying for an ADU. So we're going on three years for the primary. We'll take a little breather. We build the ADU. Is that another three years? So now we're in construction for a decade? So he can have his dream. There's other people that live on Ridgeview Lane, and we all have to pass by it and go through it, going and coming. All right? So it's not, I want to make this clear. It's not about their family, keeping their family apart, separating their family. It's about the people that live there, who were there before me. Two of them can't come up mobility issues. They have, one of them has a caregiver, 50 miles an hour down the lane. I had to put signage up. Please drive slowly.
Thank you, sir.
And final, please let me speak a little longer because your decision affects our lane forever.
I have to be consistent, sir. Thank you very much for your information.
And we were never notified
Thank you.
of any intention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for listening.
Good evening, members of the board. As many people have said, and I don't know any of you until I just met Kier, thank you for serving our community.
Name, sir, sorry, and district.
I'm sorry, I was just going to say that. My name is Jim Butts, Hampton District. My wife Cynthia and I bought our home where they spent their honeymoon from Joe and Lynn Horning 20 years ago. As you know, Joe and Lynn still live in the area until Joe recently passed, but it's been our pleasure to live or have a house at Ridgeview Lane. We actually live in Great Falls. This is our retirement home. And not quite there yet, but we spend weekends and holidays as often as we can. Our kids, who are not married yet and finished with college, come out with us periodically as well, and we enjoy the peace and the quiet and the beauty of obviously everything Rappahannock, especially tonight. The sunset was spectacular. We put a lot of money into our home. We actually have 70 acres, and we are right across the street from where this construction is going on. We've upgraded our home because we plan to live there once I retire. And while we welcome Tony and Sue and appreciate the work that they're putting in and the desire they have to build a home there as well, and, you know, while we welcome them to the community, we're just not in support of the application. I'm not as adept perhaps at the building community as many people are, but I went over their plans quite carefully, and it is a three bedroom, two bathroom house, without a doubt. It's much bigger than what you were just talking about before and having six people in it relative to the trail. It is a full house. It's got full plans. They were attached to the application. There is no surprise there at all. It's not for one or two people. No communication, we got no notice, there's been no discussion. I mean, I'd even stop, and Tony and I have talked periodically when we pull into ours, and he's there, which doesn't happen a lot, but never about this application or anything from the county. And fundamentally, there's no conversation about it being an accessory dwelling or ultimately, you know, the risk of it being a rental. The zoning permits, one per 25, as you guys know better than I do, not two. Now, for two different families, even though they're related, they're still two different families on one 25 acre lot. And as everybody said, these are private roads, and we know what that means. It means we all pay for it ourselves. Every time something happens, we pay to have it graded, or thankfully, one of our neighbors, Floyd, you know, was in the business, and it would get done. And we paid for all the rock, and we pay for everything all the time. So doubling the density on the one site is not as simple as saying, let's grow and allow the family to be there, because then it could happen over and over again, as we heard earlier. There are two entrances, very clearly. I've got 70 acres. I've got one entrance. I've got three buildings. I've got one entrance. So two entrances, already built before this is approved, is not the way this is meant to happen. So I, reading the general standards that Maureen sort of quoted through a little bit, don't believe that this is appropriate, and it truly can impair our values of our homes, which is not what the special exception language allows. And so given that, in my opinion, this is not in conformance, I expect that you guys have to say no, whether you want to or not, because it's not in conformance, it impairs our values, and it's not standard for what is allowed on a 25 acre lot. And so with that, I appreciate your attention and your concern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Laura Grigsby, Hampton District. I'd like to start very first by clarifying one really important point. The property, the 25 acres that Sue and Tony own now, was originally owned by Floyd and I, and we purchased it as a tree farm. It is not a pine forest. It was a mature tree farm when we sold it to Sue and Tony. And according to our forestry plan, which we had to file in this county on a regular basis, it would need to be harvested very soon. So whether they built a house on it or not, or it was just 25 acres of raw land after it was finished, that was an inevitability. There has been significant construction on Ridgeview Lane since we purchased, or Floyd and I purchased the property at 71 Ridgeview, which is 60 acres and was contiguous and still is contiguous with the 25 acres that Sue and Tony have. There's been significant construction on that road, and the road would probably not be drivable if Floyd had not done the significant amount of work that he did for ditches and pavement, or paving, or taking care of the roads, or pulling back autumn log, olives, or even when we had 36 inches of snow in the 90s, and he ended up hiring a splitter to go in there to be able to get to the back property so those ladies could get out. So we have a very strong tie to this community. We own five individual pieces of property. The Ridgeview Lane property, which is 60 acres. We have 200 acres that is on Long Mountain Road and has one property between that and Ridgeview Lane. One of the things about this county, and my husband is born here. I will come here in 1988 when he left long enough to make enough money to be able to afford to buy property here in Rappahannock. I've been at a number of board of supervisor meetings and hearing people that say that if you own a lot of land in Rappahannock, that you inherited money or whatever. Floyd and I don't vacation. We've had cattle. We've had three jobs throughout the time that we have been here, and we moved back to the county full time in 1995. And we have moved money into this county. We watch as we, as a county, try to encourage young people to come back here and people with skills that will matter in this organization, in this county, and the way that things function. So it makes me really sad when we have this opportunity to bring a young couple, who, he is an electrician, into this community without having welcoming arms on a piece of property that would have been completely cleared of all of the pine, and I've got a forestry plan that would demonstrate that at some point in time. We would have had to do it, or someone else would have had to. And Sue and Tony opted to purchase the property from us. So we are in absolute support of them doing this. And it makes me very sad that other people who have done continuous construction on their properties are so adamantly opposed to the amount of time that's taken for Sue and Tony to build their home and the next dwelling that could be on that property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Hello. Kay Clark, Hampton District, 291 Ridgeview Lane. I just have one observation I'd like to include that hasn't been, the husband didn't have a chance to bring up. And that's Tony has mentioned that they've been here in the county for four years. We know how long they've been working on their property. That, you know, stuff happens. But what I find interesting is that, you know, we're four years into it, and their three family cars still sport Florida state license plates. Longevity, I don't know when we're still got Florida plates on our cars. Thanks.
Thank you. Boy, they're colored.
My name is Karen Hunt, Jackson District. The board is in receipt of my letter dated November the 2nd, and I hope has had a chance to review it. This property was purchased May 7th of 2021 as raw land that aerial photographs depict as a densely treed lot. A building permit for a two bedroom, two and a half bath dwelling was issued November the 17th of 2022. That primary dwelling is still under construction. No occupancy permit has been issued. Our ordinance defines an accessory unit as one that is, and I quote, "clearly subordinate to, found in association with, and serving a principal use." An ADU is an accessory thereto a principal residence. Section 170-70D1 states, "No accessory structure shall be occupied or utilized unless the principal structure to which it is an accessory is occupied or utilized." On just that point alone, this application appears to put the cart before the horse. Neighbors and others intimately familiar with this property prior to the May 2021 purchase have stated there was no second driveway in existence at that time. An aerial photograph of the primary dwelling from earlier in the construction process clearly shows one driveway access to the residence under construction, but not the second one, and that would be the attachment B. What is currently being depicted as a second driveway is actually short ingress that extends roughly 20 to 30 feet into the parcel and then abruptly stops. It appears to have been recently gravled as of September 15th, 2024, and that would be attachment C. Ridgeview Lane is a shared, narrow, one lane, private road with one way in and one way out and no formal maintenance agreement. Long Mountain Road must be traversed for one to one and a half miles, depending on which way you go, to access Ridgeview Lane. Neighbors have expressed safety concerns, particularly with regard to fire response. That consideration was not addressed by the planning commission. There is nothing in our ordinance that prohibits an ADU from being rented to others. A completely separate dwelling served by a separate entrance seems much more likely to become a rental than adding an addition to a primary structure to accommodate a family member. This application raises a number of questions and issues. Should we, as a county, even be considering a special exception for what our ordinance clearly defines as being subordinate to the primary use when the primary use isn't complete? Was there a driveway in existence when this property was purchased in May of 2021? If there is an existing driveway on a parcel, but a new driveway is created for a primary dwelling, does this circumvent the intent of our ordinance that ADUs are intended to utilize a shared driveway? A review of health department records indicates that the intent of the applicants from inception has been four bedrooms total, between two separate dwellings and some kind of configuration, originally with one shared driveway, and that would be attachment A. The special exception provision for an ADU was not intended to be used as an end run around our ordinance. around our ordinance and zoning density requirements that have been in place for nearly 30 years. Staff's recommendation of an open-ended unspecified timeframe for primary dwelling completion and obtaining an occupancy permit is troubling. Essentially, what that would be doing would be considering approval of a special exception request that cannot be diligently prosecuted at the time we are authorizing it, because it does not currently comport with ordinance requirements, and then delaying the one-year commencement of construction requirements that are laid out in Section 170-60 for some unspecified period of time. I suggest this is highly unusual and sets a terrible precedence. It bears repeating, the special exception is just that. It is special, and it is an exception. An ADU is not a by right use. The burden is on the applicant to prove that the exception they seek will not have detrimental impacts to neighboring properties. I suggest this application, at the very least, is premature, and I respectfully ask the board to consider all the implications here and deny this application. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and there's no one on Zoom. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and open it up to the board.
I just wanted to mention that the planning commission, when we took our vote, Mr. Atkins did, not Mr. Atkins, Tommy Sisk did vote against this application because he felt that really the primary dwelling should be in place before the ADU can be considered. And without having that in place, he didn't feel like it had the proper sequence of events, if I'm summarizing that correctly. I hope he'll forgive me if I haven't gotten it quite right.
Madam Chair, I'll jump in. This is in the Hampton voting district. So I received Ms. Moran and Mr. Brodman's communications, and then I also spoke by telephone with another resident on Ridgeview, and I've also heard from Ms. Grigsby, and I recognize that there are, what should I say, emotions are definitely high on this application. And so what I've tried to do in advance of this meeting is try to sort out kind of how we ended up here, both in terms of the application, but more importantly, how we ended up here in terms of our ordinance. And I just want to lay out a couple of foundational things that I think would be helpful for our further discussion tonight. So the way I look at this application is the Ruiz family could have constructed a guest house by right, even if they had only two acres, and that's in our ordinance. And the only difference between a guest house and this accessory dwelling unit is that I believe a guest house cannot have a kitchen. Is that correct? So if you're looking at the continuum of potential ways that an applicant could come to us and seek the addition of another dwelling on a property, recognizing our density limitation is one dwelling per 25 acres, on the least restrictive end of the continuum, they could have simply built a guest house, and it would have been approved administratively, period. And on the other end of the spectrum, and we have patiently waiting for a hearing next, if we get there, and that is for more than one dwelling on a parcel, and that also requires a special exception permit, and I assure, I can assure you that if the Ruizes had come in and sought a special exception permit to have two houses on a 25-acre parcel, I can guess that would be a nonstarter. I believe that if they came in administratively and said, we're building a guest house, I think that would be probably approved with just some building office oversight. So here we are kind of in the middle, and the question is, where did this accessory dwelling unit provision or ordinance come from? So I tried to understand better the legislative history of it, and it's really an outgrowth of what used to be called in our zoning ordinance, and I want to thank Mr. Curry and Mr. Goff for helping guide me through this. But it is important, I think, for everyone to understand how we got here in terms of our ordinance. The, I think, early on, when I first paid attention to the zoning ordinance, it was a family apartment provision, a family apartment provision. But it seems that this notion of legislating limitations on only family members residing in some kind of accessory unit is difficult, if not impossible, to enforce. You can't. And so during, I believe, what were called the May amendments, this family apartment provision of the ordinance morphed into accessory dwelling unit provision that is, by definition, certainly more generic in nature than this notion of a family apartment framing of the ordinance. But I think it's better in the sense that it's still, it removes the family idea from the concept, but it still is premised on the idea that it's an accessory dwelling within 200 feet of a primary residence and limited in size to 1,200 square feet. And so no doubt, we can spend a lot of time thinking about what the floor plan means in terms of future use, but it's 1,200 square feet, and that's it. If you look in the very last section of the provision on accessory dwelling units, there's a pretty ambiguous sentence there that talks about converting, I think it's converting, could you pull it up? This is important, too, because one of your neighbors asked me specifically about this, and I wanted to understand it. This provision at the bottom, it says, "In no case shall accessory space," and now I'm squinting, "be converted to residential occupancy, and the board is empowered to impose such conditions as will render such conversion unlikely, including but not limited floor plans, means of ingress, egress." When I first read that, I thought, okay, is this saying that we can somehow protect against a family accessory dwelling unit being converted to some other broader rental use? In fact, that's not what that means. That relates to the old family apartment provision and the idea that you might have a big pole barn or something, and within, inside of that, you have what you call your accessory dwelling unit, and it's 1,200 square feet, and then you have another 1,200 square feet in the same building or directly adjacent to it. That's a garage, and that provision prohibits the applicant from taking that additional space and also making it a dwelling unit. So I think we can set aside that language and say it's not applicable here, because the application is for a 1,200-square-foot accessory dwelling unit. So that's sort of the foundation of how we got here. I am trying to just look at the ordinance and judge the application. I do want to understand, and I want to hear from my colleagues, the extent to which we could put, potentially, if we were to agree to accept this application and approve it, the extent to which we could put a condition requiring the completion of construction on the primary residence within a reasonable time period, given the concerns expressed by the neighbors, and I get that construction is not pretty, it's disruptive, and I would like to have some definitive idea of when that construction would have to conclude. One question I had, and I don't know if Ms. Grigsby would be in a position to answer this, or if you would know off the top of your head. Several residents have raised the question about the second entrance, which is, as you see in the plain language of our ordinance, kind of a critical point. I personally can see that that idea of a second entrance is kind of key to the idea that this would be an accessory dwelling unit for a family member. Coming in through one entrance, you would be less inclined to put it out on the open market to long-term renters. It would presumably be someone you know, who would always be driving in your driveway past your house. And so my question to Ms. Grigsby is, was there, in fact, when you and Floyd had that as a tree farm, were there two entrances into the tree farm, as far as you know? Because the question has been about existing.
There was one entrance, if you can call it that, that had the tree farms on my at the end, you know, up the hill. So I'd have to look it up and see if it planned to be able to identify that, and I would have that way.
Mr. Ruiz, when you bought the property, did it have two entrances or not?
Yes, it was not ground. It's the sign of the tree farm was under a rite, but it was enough to be able to actually have a car going, you know, bumping, going to the property. When we applied for our permit for our home residence, we actually followed the rules to actually have the permit, and then we just create this second one for our home residence and leave that one as a secondary first stop when we cleared the three acres. Do you want to say something, Karen?
Yes, I just want to add that that was basically, what was in place, there was an unapproved entrance, the vehicular entrance to the property.
Yeah, and I know one.
I also want to add that from having walked that road, walked Ridgeview Lane, the way that the pathway kind of turned, it was not visible, and the trees were up before we cleared the property, it was not visible from outside. You had to go in to it, and then it was tearing.
Okay. All right, and I'm just throwing this out there. Let's say that we approved the application, but on the condition that there was only a single entrance to the property, with the idea that there's really no ordinance-based way to force you to rent it only to your son Marcos and his young family. Is the property currently configured in such a way that you could use a single entrance into the property or not?
I would prefer to say an entrance.
And I want to address that, because it has so many speculations, it's so many derogatory, like, very intense, which is a very shock, coming and living in the county, and I have never seen this before, to the point that it's very intrusive. I just want to point it out.
Okay, and then that leads, that's a segue into a question for our staff. What, could you clarify what the notification requirements are and what notifications actually occurred?
So the county is required by state code to notify the immediately adjoining property owners, and that was done.
Oh, was that done? Mail or?
Yes, ma'am.
In addition, the yard sign was placed.
Correct.
And then my last question, sorry. And the travel trailer on the property, if I recall correctly, those are allowed by our zoning ordinance for construction projects or not? And that, it's neither, the trailer is neither here nor there in terms of the spirit of the application, as far as I'm concerned, but I just want to understand what the rules are, because it was raised as a concern by the neighbors tonight. It can be, and it can be allowed as what? As temporary housing while you're building a house?
Yes, and for how long?
I don't recall.
Okay, all right, thanks. I'll let my colleagues jump in.
So some of my questions have been addressed already, but first, it did seem, it does seem a little like putting the cart before the horse. So I wanted to understand, do we see that often? Do you see that often at the planning commission? If so, I just want to know if there are any other instances like this in the county.
I don't know that this, per se, has ever happened when I've been on the planning commission before, but sometimes things do happen out of order, and so you try to plan accordingly and building contingencies. I am the board's representative, so I'll speak on behalf of my fellow commissioners and say, I think it's all of our hope that making this ADU conditional on completion of the primary residence incentivizes completion of the primary residence in the most timely way possible. In addition, I would also say, one point that my fellow commissioners brought up is that in addition to a guest house, this could have been approached as an addition or as part of the ongoing current construction, and minimal permitting would have been required. There is also a tie-in, which we haven't discussed, but there's shared septic with this ADU and the primary residence. So that truly does tie the structures together and cause the owner of the primary residence to have an interest in what's going on in the ADU and maintaining it properly and having an eye toward keeping that property together, that that ties the two buildings. So those points were all broached at the planning commission, and I hope that's helpful. We did also review some older photographs and had discussion from people that had been back there over the years, and there was a recollection. It's tricky, my recollection of the ADU language was always that it discussed a shared driveway, but it doesn't. It says an existing entrance. How sophisticated that entrance has to be, how complete that entrance has to be, paved, stone, dirt, it doesn't say. And we did conclude based on recollections of some individuals and, I think, one photograph, that that was the kind of work entrance, crude work entrance for the tree farm.
Can I?
The chairman runs the meeting.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. No, I appreciate that. I would like to hear from the board. Thank you.
To answer your question, Ms. Comer, I believe, and Mr. Curry might remember this one, because it wasn't that long ago, we did have a situation out on 211 between the town of Washington and Amistville on the north side of 211, where somebody basically had a farm building that had a residential space in it, and then they built their house. And when they realized that the two had to be tied together, I think it put them under a little bit of pressure in terms of where to locate their primary residence, so that was definitely backwards.
A lot of times, people want to have a garage or an apartment and a house, and then it's hard, how do you do that? And do you want to build the house while you're here to watch the house be built? And so, you know, you want to do that in the right sequence, and it's tricky to try to make that work. What I would say is that if somebody came in with a permit application to build a house that was by right, they would be issued that, if it met the requirement among yard setbacks. If they wanted to build a separate garage while they're building that house, which is accessory to the house, we would issue the permit to build the garage while the house is under construction, and it's logical, you would allow that to happen. This particular accessory use isn't by right, and so staff couldn't just take that action. Those individuals would have to come to the board to see if the use is acceptable for that property relative to its impacts. And once the board considers that, then it's a function of issuing zoning building permits at the office, as would be for a regular garage. So I do recognize that there's great value in incentivizing the principal residence to be completed, and linking that with a condition might make sense, but it's very normal for a property owner to build a garage while they're building their house, build in accessory use while they're building their principal use.
It would also be allowable to build a guest house.
Right, yes, which would be a by right accessory use. You could build it at the exact same time.
I just have a quick question. I heard some of the neighbors talking about erosion. ENS plan, was there erosion or anything?
Very likely, this would be an agreement in lieu of a plan, because it's residential, so they have to meet the minimum standards. I can't speak to what inspections have been done on that site.
But no, okay.
And if it were a tree farm, there would be, and it was harvested, there would be exceedingly little erosion control requirements by state.
Absolutely. Which is an interesting point. I have one more question, which is, did you guys build that road before you made this application?
What we did was enhance with gravel.
Before the application or after you made the application?
I can't remember when I said five. Yeah, but we just put gravel on it because, first of all, we settled like all three twice. We have been facing the portion of our Ridgefield property. As a cornerstone, the last time we did that was like two, three weeks ago that we came to fix that corner. Because I have been hearing that it's three years, which is not true. We, if they can go to the office of permit, they can actually see when we submit the permit. That's a derogatory information that is not true. That's a false statement. And then second, we have been contributing to actually enhance Ridgefield. And we took it on and then also recognized that we have to make up, as a good neighbor, fix what we have. The fact that we have been slow in our construction, the house is not a conventional house. It's not a person house. That is required a lot of movement to be able to build it the right way. And during the pandemic, we didn't find any contractor to actually oversee. We hired a consultant. We actually make sure that we were involved on it. We live in the property, it's not by luxury that we have the RV, as all their neighbors said. We sacrificed and the confidence to actually have a rental by far away to oversee the project. And then we have that RV there. It is not easy too, but that's the only way we can oversee subcontractors and make sure that we get it right. And that's addressing the long, you know, the long construction of our property.
What's your expectation on completing your primary residence?
We are kind of like probably eighty percent, seventy-five percent.
Probably ninety, ninety-two to ninety-five percent completion.
We just need to fit like tiles and all that stuff.
What's your, I mean, when do you think you'll be able to seek an occupancy permit for it realistically?
Another three months, they sell.
Less than that. I mean, it's just unless the county has in December received.
So the well and the septic, everything's in?
The well and septic was scheduled to arrive in two weeks. We have hired local to do the septic, which is low down here. And then the well, we have somebody to come to.
Yeah, we have already.
Yeah, we are scheduled to have those two.
Reason I ask is I got my permit a year and a half ago, probably, for the well and septic and then couldn't get the well dug. So my permit passed away in a year's time and I had to go back and get a new permit.
And Mr. Chairman, if that happened during the pandemic, which is like, oh, you are two years from now. And I said, oh, my God, like, and coordinating all our stuff during that period. We sat down sometimes waiting for materials. Like it was like a disaster.
COVID was tough.
And then desperation as well. We have been enhancing the property as well on landscaping, making sure that we just get everything done and like these then. But it appears to me they just one and a half all very quick.
The only other question, when I watched the planning commission video, the issue about the road and road maintenance came up so many times in that conversation, not just yours, but everybody that's on that road. And unfortunately, in my district, Chester Gap, people move in not knowing that they have to take care of their own road. And so I don't know if there's an HOA or you guys have a written legal agreement or anything for the homeowners on that?
She was given time to talk a little further. I would. This second road that we're talking about, as a young man, I walked my dog through that tree farm many times because it was abundant with turkeys nested, wilding, black bear, on and on and on. That's all going. This decision affects Ridgefield Lane forever. And there was no driveway. I walked through it. And what they're talking about possibly is the owners in the early 2000s allowed people to hunt over there. And because it's a single lane road, there was no place to park. They either parked somewhere on someone else's property and hunt across the street or they put their SUV off the road so they could park it. Over the years of hunting, allowing hunting, because it's a single private lane, it may form a place to park the car. And they are calling that a driveway. There was no need to have entrance to the tree farm. It was just a tree farm. There was no reason to go in there, look around, drive around. It was a tree farm, one tree running after the other. So the indentation was from allowing hunting, a guy backing a SUV in there during hunting season over the years.
Thank you.
One thing I didn't mention is since it's come up is the road. My understanding is it falls into the category of a non-conforming private road that serves more than five residences. And so, and a couple of you have appropriately brought up the idea that this is not a by right use. And so one thing we've been taught over the years is that when you consider an exception to a by right use, you have to look at imposing conditions to sort of bring it to a by right equivalent, but also consider any sort of non-conforming activity that could become more non-conforming from the use. And so I'm mindful of the fact that it is a private lane. We have an ongoing multi-decade controversy involving a private road in the county and multiple attempts to basically put a commercial property at the top of that private lane, which is much worse than your road. But there, you know, it's a commercial use. So I'm, when I view this accessory dwelling unit and think about its at least contemplated use for a small family, I can tell you that if this was an application for a tourist home, I'd have big time reservations about it. But I have fewer reservations about making the non-conform use of the road more non-conforming with basically what is a, with a kitchen guest house, which would be, again, going back to the original foundational discussion, a guest house would be by right on this property, period, even if it was only two acres, I believe, right? So I, I, these decisions are really tough. I wish it was a single entrance. I think it's now, it now seems there's a second one. I'm not, I'm not inclined to have someone undo something that's there. I'm not suggesting it's a perfect driveway, but that entrance is now there. And I'm not going to get into a discussion about what existing means. I mean, it's there whether we like, whether we all like it or not. But I'll go ahead and just move the discussion along. I think that we need to put a hard stop on the, in my motion, which will be a motion to approve the application. I would like to propose a condition that the special exception permit would expire if the primary residence does not have attached to it an occupancy permit by March 31 of 2025. Because I feel like we need to give some certainty to the folks who are concerned about protracted construction and the disruptions that are stemming from that. And I feel like that's at least a small way of giving everyone involved some certainty. And if we do agree to approve the permit, I know that there will be many unhappy people. But I am looking at the plain language of our ordinance. And it meets the 200 foot from a primary dwelling sighting and it is 1,200 square feet or less. And I wish the second entrance wasn't there, but I'm not. I don't know that there's much we can do about that right now. So I will move that we approve the special exception permit. And just to frame the motion, it's special exception permit application 24-05-04 with these staff recommended conditions slightly modified to state that the special exception permit would expire on March 31, 2025 if a occupancy permit has not been issued for the primary residence. And that's, the application that you submitted is costly. I recognize that. So hopefully there's incentive there that you don't want that to go away. But I hope that that'll give a little bit of predictability and at least a hard stop on the construction, which I know is disruptive and not pretty to look at. And in terms of vegetation and screening, I think that it's, if this was a tourist home or something along those lines or a country inn, I think I would go down that road. But I don't know from a property rights perspective that, and maybe Mr. Goff can weigh in on that. Can we put any kind of screening, vegetation, vegetative screening condition on application like this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's a little stated. Sounds to me like you have essentially a denuded tree farm, which would have been denuded of vegetation almost every 20 to 25 years.
Yeah.
So I don't know exactly what purpose that would serve from the standpoint of this application. I think you're right when you have a tourist home or a hotel kind of thing where there's going to be a lot of lights on all hours of night and day and people coming in and out. It kind of makes sense, a lot of cars parked there on a glare and windshield shine as well as outdoor lighting, which is not a part of this application. It would make sense, but that again is permitted. It's just whether it's necessary.
Okay, all right. So my motion is to approve this with the condition that the occupancy permit be issued no later than March 31, 2025 and then any other staff and planning commission recommendations that carry with the application to us.
I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
I'll just say, having that the permit expiring at the end of March makes me far more comfortable with this. I don't think it's fair to subject neighbors to ongoing construction. Having lived next to an excavator for a few years myself, I can appreciate this hard stop. So at the end of the day, it is all about being good neighbors. And hopefully you guys can make that deadline and move forward.
And I know it's not in what we're about to vote on, but dark skies are very important to this community. And given that you're in a neighborhood on a private lane, I think anything you can do to ensure that there isn't a bright light shining in your neighbor's face when they drive down the road is probably a good thing. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
What's up?
Giving everybody a second to exit if you would like.
Are we taking a break? I'll cover for you.
All right. Two-minute recess. One, thank you. We have one more public hearing and thank you for your patience. This is SC 24-06-01.
Pursuant to 170, 36A, Natalie Bradley and Chad Briggs have requested a special exception for a second dwelling on their property or more than one home per tract of land. Their property is located at 31 Sharp Rock Road with 205 acres in Ryanne County and roughly 10 acres in Madison. The property is owned agricultural and conservation. The applicants propose to build a second residence on their property to serve as their full-time home. They plan to use the existing home as a guest cottage for visiting friends and family without removing the kitchen. The health department commented that a private soil scientist has designed a sewage disposal system and located a proposed well site for the property. When the owners are ready to begin construction of the proposed home, they will need to submit construction permits to their office for review. The planning commission held their public hearing on September 18. And after hearing from the public, recommend approval of this application with one condition that they comply with dark skies lighting. This has been advertised twice in the local newspaper pursuant 15.22204 and applicants are present with their attorney.
Probably give Michelle like two minutes after walking upstairs.
And you talk fast, so that was like the worst.
Now you can breathe, yes.
Breath you're talking fast.
All right, is there anything you'd wish to let us hear before we get?
Just briefly, I'll keep my comments very brief. Michael Brown, here on behalf of Ms. Bradley and Mr. Briggs. The staff report is an adequate summary. It explains the situation completely. The one thing that I wanted to address was in our planning commission meeting. There was some discussion and concern about whether permitting a second dwelling on a property was in some way an end run or somehow compromised our zoning and subdivision ordinance. And I thought it was just worth commenting on for that for just a moment. The, you know, we're all familiar with our one per 25 acre dwelling density or in the conservation, one per 50. And it's just, it's worth pointing out that the approval of a second dwelling on a parcel doesn't add density to that parcel. It's still subject to the density that was there. It's based on the number of acres. So if the applicants later chose to subdivide their property, the maximum amount that they could under the zoning ordinance, they'd have to take into account that, you know, they wouldn't be able to build. Let's say that there's 100 acres in Ag and 100 acres in Conservation to make the math easy. So there were, you know, six parcels total. That they wouldn't be able, this isn't going to give them a seventh parcel that they could get out of that density. They would have to take into account that one of those houses is already there. They can draw lines around it and make it a parcel, but it doesn't add density. So I just wanted to touch on that because that was a subject of some discussion in the planning commission. We have this, there are no additional standards that apply to this application, just the general standards for a special exception. We've addressed those in the application materials. If anything, I would submit that in terms of impact on neighbors, this is probably the least impactful that you could have when considering that they could have come in and just filed a subdivision plat, built whatever house they wanted, there wouldn't have been any comment on it. So we urge approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Mike?
We're in a public hearing, obviously.
We are.
It's that time of night, what time is it?
Almost nine, yes.
The time change, maybe. Given all this time change.
All right, I'll open the public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to speak, please be recognized. It's catching.
I'm going to go for a creeper.
No handouts.
And again.
No, no handouts.
Five minutes max.
No handouts.
Karen Hunt, Jackson District. I don't have an issue with the second dwelling on a parcel of this size. They certainly have sufficient acreage. They are retaining the existing residential dwelling, which does have a kitchen. So per our ordinance, it is a separate dwelling and not a guest cottage. That language was used in the application, so I just want to make sure we're clear. The property location for the new dwelling is not in close proximity to the existing one and is intended to be permanent, so that's an important point. The applicant, the applicants don't want to pursue a subdivision at this time, and the application very specifically states the proposed residence does not include any subdivision of the lot, and so does not affect any subdivision rights of neighboring properties. And I guess I'm not sure what neighboring properties this refers to, but there is a deeded 50-foot right-of-way easement recorded on page three of the deed. So if a subdivision of this property should occur, occur in the future, and maybe Mr. Brown just partly addressed this point, is there a clear way to track that, that, that there are now two dwellings on this parcel? And that that's taken into account when calculating the remaining density is available for development? Because there have been a few situations where something got lost in the shuffle and that kind of got missed. So when we grant these types of special exception requests, we should just consider the future impact of a proposed use with respect to our ordinance and density requirements. And I did ask this question at the planning commission about whether applicants will be willing to consider exchanging a subdivision right for the density dwelling. They did indicate that they were open to that and that their intent was to retain the parcel as it is and not subdivide, and that's why they chose to go this route. So I was just wondering if there, could a record be noted on the plat that then runs with the deed, so it becomes recorded and doesn't, you know, maybe get lost? I have seen in other instances where covenants are noted in the deed that detail whatever specific circumstances apply, whether it be restricted to a particular type of use, such as residential, or whether that parcel is eligible for future subdivision or not. And those covenants run with the deed, so they're not overlooked or forgotten later down the road. And I'm just wondering if something like that could be done in this instance. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Anyone else? This has been the slowest Zoom night I've had.
I'd say we do.
All right, if there's no one else, I will close the public hearing and open it up to the board.
I think, I think that the last time we dealt with one of these that was straightforward because of the acreage involved was Cliff Miller, if I remember correctly. And I don't think that they ever did anything with it.
I think we did one acquaintance after that.
Oh, that's right, yeah. But it's certain, to me, it's, it's a better route to go than subdivision. And it arguably keeps the property intact as a parcel, so.
That's what I was, exactly what I was going to say. I commend them for keeping it together. And to Mr. Brown's point, it adds, it will be accounted for in the end anyway.
That's basically what we all said at the planning commission. We commend the owners on their wanting to keep the parcel together. Some of the very savvy members of the planning commission said, "Don't give up any rights. If you've got the property rights, keep them." And I would encourage you to keep your property rights as they exist now. This is a very reasonable use of this property. And, I mean, I can cut to the chase and recommend approval as presented in the staff report with the addition of compliance with dark sky lighting as discussed at the planning commission.
All right, you got a motion and a second, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for sitting all night.
So patiently.
Mike should have taken you all first, but we didn't know.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Just check the accuracy of your bill from Mike. He should bill you for idle time.
May we have a slightly longer break, Madam Chairman?
Certainly, I know someone else would probably... All right, so five minutes.
Slightly longer.
Slightly, that's three minutes longer.
No, I just met him. So what did he say?
I'm going to...
I think we have a limit of three public comments per citizen, per night, so.
You think we're done?
Sorry.
Just for that.
Uh-oh.
Just for that.
All right, I'm going to open public comment. Anyone wishing to speak?
Well, hang on. I don't have any prepared remarks.
Although I did just want to say, so you haven't gotten to it yet, but this is my chance. When you, when you do talk about signage, I'm a little concerned that we dropped any mention of a limit on number of signs. And just want to put that out there to maybe gel on that and rethink that, even though you have set an aggregate limit, which is pretty high, 75 square feet. Sorry?
It doesn't strike me as much, but okay.
Okay. But, you know, if you have like 50, you know, one-by-signs, the visual impact to that can be significant as opposed to a couple of larger signs. And somebody else brought up the idea, and actually I think I may have talked about it with my supervisor, of, you know, creative signage for businesses, since a lot of this is being driven by businesses. And I was thinking of seasonal things. And Muskrat Haven Farm, I believe, believe it was them, had a sign at one point where, as things went in and out of season, they would have a separate sign. They must have had like pegs or hooks. And so they could take off the, you know, the strawberry sign and put the peachy sign on or whatever. But in terms of what you saw, it wasn't like a bunch of little signs everywhere. So I think there may be ways to, you know, accommodate the concern about, you know, the farmers and the seasonal change, and how do they address that? And, you know, a lot of little bitty signs that a lot of community doesn't want. And, you know, I think, I think we can be creative and come to that. But I think not having any limit at all on a number of signs could be, you know, we're not... 95% of the people are going to behave themselves, but there's always going to be a couple that are going to push the envelope, and that's, you know, what we need to plan for. So, thank you.
Thank you.
How big was the Comer for Supervisor sign at Muskrat Haven Farm, do you remember? I thought so, okay. It came under the limit.
And he did ask for a bigger one, just so you know.
Okay.
Anyone else for a public comment?
Oh, well, why not?
It's a festive evening.
Anita Ramos, Hampton District. Temporary housing, I've just chatted with a couple of you about it. You've, you kind of threw out along the way the boarding house or rooming, rooming house idea. I still like that idea. I lived that idea when I was in college for a short time. And there's times when people just need a room. I was thinking about the guys this afternoon that are going to have all these workers putting in the new lines down through the park. And I asked them where they were staying, and they didn't quite tell me. But I thought, those guys are going to end up staying in Loray and not here. And they might be just wanting a room. And where I stayed, it was a room and two meals a day from a cook that was fabulous. And it was people like me that were just staying in Richmond for three months. And there were guys that were working in the yards at the railroad there. And they just wanted a room because they were saving money to send back home to West Virginia. And I know that sometimes, I know somebody that rented their, their Airbnb equivalent to someone for a couple of months that was here in the county. And, but it would be nice to still have that in there. And it's in a number of other counties from looking at what we have been looking at as examples. So that's, that's my thinking on it, is just leave it there just in case someday someone says, "Oh, I've got this old house with a bunch of bedrooms, and I'd like to rent it out." But not as a bed and breakfast meeting, or not as an Airbnb. But it's a boarding house. So anyway, think on it.
Thank you. Thanks. Okay, I think I can close the public comment period. All right.
So what do we have left tonight?
Two, two things. I wanted to circle back on the sign conversation and make sure I documented what we talked about.
Can we, do we have, if, can we, can we move to, do we have stuff that we can have a hearing on?
Well, that's what we're going to find out. So I wanted to run through this and, and make sure the board was aware of all the instances where temporary signs are talked about in the ordinance that was released for public hearing last August, with the changes that you talked about.
Okay.
Okay? And I don't know if we take, if we modify the version that was out for public hearing last August, then we can't really put that to public hearing. I also attempted to modify our current ordinance to incorporate revised temporary sign item. I mean, if, if... Goals, and it's, it's so wrong in so many other places, it seems. I, I don't, it just doesn't seem like that makes sense. But I think what you can do is you, as you envisioned before, you make changes to this or other draft for temporary, and then we try to put a pin in it and say that part's ready for public hearing. Then we can look at the off-premise and put a pin in that. And then we go through the different categories in small bites. Then we look at it all together and say, okay, that's the one that we want to push back to the planning commission, polish up a little bit, let's go through the public hearing process.
But on the, for example, if we, if we button up the temporary sign part of it, that doesn't need to go back to the planning commission, right?
It eventually will. We will have an entirely new public hearing process, yes.
I think my frustration was this, is that we hear very emphatically from people at the end of the process, but we don't get a lot of feedback at all the places in between.
You did have your informal public hearing that did garner some pretty decent input.
Yes, yes.
And so I think that was helpful. It was hard for people to untether themselves from anything proposed and just tell you what they think would be wonderful in a perfect world. But I think that people need the straw man at some point in time to say, "No, that's not like the board, that's not what we want to do."
Well, and I saw Businesses of Rappahannock put out some social media today about, "Hey, the Board of Supervisors is working on the signed ordinance and would like your feedback." And, and, you know, nobody's on Zoom. And I don't want to say nobody's here, but our, our diehard every-meeting attendees are here. So I wonder if there's a way to have an informal listening session and specifically pull people in through Businesses of Rappahannock or...
Go to them at a BOR event.
Ma Smith and I, actually, after the last meeting, and we did a fair amount of discussion on ourselves of Businesses of Rappah... It is contagious. Businesses of Rappahannock and I. She and I had a conversation, and I, I think we do need to hear from them because, as Ma Smith just said, and some of you others said, we, we, at the tail end is where, you know, we'll, we'll get rushed with all this feedback. I feel like somewhere along the lines, we mentioned a roundtable of some sort. So kind of, I don't know if this is where you were headed, maybe like targeted come. Like invitations come to this... Somehow less formal, you know, somehow in a way that encourages more interaction.
Businesses of Rappahannock has quarterly, like, get-together. I mean, they could invite staff to go over the changes that are contemplated then and get them excited. Sometimes you have to go to them rather than invite them to come to you.
I like that idea. That would be great.
And I don't know if they would be interested in that while they're sipping their wine, but...
Is it the same night as planning commission normally? I think it might be. Just, I mean, we have Michelle.
That's like a job for me.
Yes.
I do think that Mr. Curry's suggestion is a good one. That, like, I, I would like to just keep moving through and then get them. And we've moved through them. And then, I, I mean, I personally, since we've... Reed V. Gilbert was 2015. This is almost 10 years. I, I'm absolutely fine personally, after what we went through in the past three years with it. Just kind of moving through it, getting to where we're all okay with it. And then, once we send it back to the planning commission pro forma, I mean, we've gone through this. Then I think people will be like, whoa, public hearing. And it's going to happen every single time, no matter how many roundtables we have. Every single time we go to a public hearing, people are going to be like, what are you doing? And I think that, you know, it's a self-selecting crowd, so I think it just depends. I, I just want to make some movement because right now we don't have a constitutionally valid sign ordinance. So I just kind of want to move forward.
Yeah.
That's just personally how I look at it.
Absolutely.
So, because I feel like we made really good headway with this temporary ones. And it was like, boom, boom, okay. Good. Well, let's move to the next one.
All right, so let's put a check mark on the temporary ones.
Okay, so just explain the process to me. So we got this from the planning commission, right?
Okay, so technically, anytime you change the ordinance, it must be public hearings held before the planning commission and/or supervisors for land use. And you did that. And technically, you can make some changes after that public hearing. However, you get into this void of issues. And so how close are they? And the advice is always just do it again.
Okay, I got it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was forgetting about that. Okay.
All right, so I'm going to zip, zip down to the critical stuff first, and then let's back up. So the main language that was discussed, let me make it bigger so you don't really have to see what's deleted. Sorry.
Well, no, it's, I just, my whole day before, it's been track changes. I'm just like, I don't...
Okay, so the maximum temporary sign area per parcel in all zoning districts shall not exceed a total aggregate of 75 square feet.
Doesn't seem like one.
Nor exceed a height of eight feet. Temporary signs must bear the first day of display and shall have a 90-day duration of display limitation in all zoning districts except for the agriculture zoning district, where they shall have a 120-day duration of display limitation as defined in... This used to refer to the hay bale section, we're not doing that anymore. And so it goes back to the definitions, okay? 17093.
Okay.
This sentence was just moved, which is what Green is referring to. Certain temporary signs do not require permit but must meet the requirements of this section. So bigger signs do need a permit, smaller signs, some other types of signs, you're allowed to do them, you still have to follow the rules. You just don't have to go to Michelle, fill out a piece of paper, and get it, okay? That's similar to the way things are done now for a lot of temporary signs. So that's the, the meat of what you guys discussed for quite a bit of time.
So you got to go down to 17890, you got to go up to 17890?
So let's, let's go up to 17093, where I inserted those definitions, which is the definition section, right? So instead of end date of display and first day of display, I flipped them around so they'd be together. Someone's looking for them, they're going to look for them together. Date of display and the last date of display, after which a temporary sign must be completely eliminated from the parcel, used to say period. We talked about, well, what about this, the signs in, the signs out? Thought, it occurred to me that perhaps you could add for at least some period of time. So it's not a permanent temporary sign forever. Don't have to do that, can do that. First day of display, the date upon which any temporary sign becomes visible to pass or buy from any public right-of-way or road. So you put this in your backyard, it's not, it's not a sign, doesn't matter, right? As long as you're not displaying it to people going by in the public right-of-way. And then duration of display is the time between those two.
Okay.
So the question is, do you want to have to, do you want people to have to have a kind of a quiet period for their temporary sign after it's been out there for 90 or 120 days? Or should it just be, here's my 90-day sign, here's my next 90-day sign, and then here's my next 90-day sign, and here's my next 90-day sign?
How many, how many complaints do we get about this stuff?
Occasionally we get them, usually around election time. And usually we say... And usually we say, talk to Vida, it's in the right-of-way.
I think that less weird and squishy we get with it.
So just.
Yeah, I mean, I think to Ms. Smith, and maybe this wasn't her point, but I, I, I think that generally what we see, there are people that would like no signs, there are people that want more signs, and I think we're just kind of getting it in the middle. And I think if we do this thing where we're trying to get people to have a quiet period, how are we gonna enforce that?
I know.
It's, it's very difficult.
It's complicated.
I agree.
Okay, was that what I liked? But it's like, what are you gonna, how are you gonna do that?
That was a conversation starter. Okay.
It definitely, no, I liked it, it's just, yeah, this has to be simple. It's like, the truth is, I, I'm not gonna name names, but there are currently temporary signs for a particular business stuck everywhere that, I won't name names. And, well, first of all, they're off-site, off wherever. But let's just say that they were permitted where they are. I wouldn't want like a cooling-off period for those. It's like, you did it, you're done. You know, I don't want to keep seeing them come back.
Yeah, and they're all the right-of-way.
And like, how to keep track? You know, it's like free advertising.
Right, so I just wanted to highlight here, this, this is the definition of temporary sign as it was, it's not been changed from what was put out for public hearing. Any sign not permanently attached to a structure nor permanently mounted to the ground that can be transported to other locations, such signs may include but not be limited to paper poster, all, all that stuff, doesn't matter.
Yeah.
Okay?
And, and the size, I think, works because, are we gonna get to size? No?
Well, that, that's in the first section we looked at, really.
Right. Because, given this, I think that that addresses Rack, yeah, and Farm Tour.
Yeah.
Being able to put up the banners. Their vinyl signs, this encompasses with the poster signs.
Okay. All right, so, this 17095, this is the other reference section, which is, you don't, you need to get a permit for all signs except for these ones.
Okay.
You still have to follow the rules, you still don't need to fill out a piece of paper. And there were several special ones that were added. The old temporary signs section had all these different rules for different types of signs. You know, whether it's weigh stand, wayside stand, all these different things. And this is how that was attempted to be accommodated to some extent in the newly proposed ordinance. There's temporary official notices, that's really just a carryover, I wouldn't worry too much about that. Temporary signs not exceeding four square feet erected on any lot or parcel, provided they meet the requirements of 101. So you don't have to come to Michelle to get a permit if you want to put hate has no home here on your property. You just have to not have too many square feet of it. Makes sense. We don't want to be dealing with every time somebody puts out a four-square-foot sign. But the big question here is, do, do these square footages, are they within the 75 or are they in addition to the 75? Okay? And that was confusion with this earlier draft when it went to public hearing. Temporary signs not exceeding an aggregate of 32 square feet located on any lot or parcel that's for sale or lease. Before, there was a special kind of real estate sign. We can't do that anymore, but we can say, if your property's for sale, you're allowed to put up an extra special sign that we can't tell you what's on it. Do we want to allow them to have a 32-square-foot sign on that property that's for sale in addition to their normal 75?
No, I say just aggregate, it's fine. I, I, I think so because, but, yeah, because, I mean, yeah, just, I think 75. Because I think what we were looking at, right, was, and Ms. Smith brought this up, there are some folks that have big two, you know, plywood signs, size signs, and that, that's about 75. And that seems to be, there's a lot of folks that like, seemingly really like to do that. That, that's a good amount of signage.
Right.
And if we do this, we don't get to tell them it has to be a for-sale sign.
Correct.
So, and I'm not saying that anybody would want to really carve that out for any weird reason, but I don't know.
What it also means is that if my property's for sale and I have a sign up that says it's for sale, I can no longer put two big political signs up.
I thought we had an allowance. How much is the plywood sheet, square footage?
Right, 32.
So it's 64, and then we gave them another.
Yeah, you could put, you could do that, right, you'd be.
We gave them a little.
I guess the point is you get less signage than your neighbor when your house is for sale, and that's okay.
I think that's a better rule because we're really not regulating content there. I see what you're doing.
I'm game, I'm game. Let's do it.
You're, you're getting less one.
You're game. You get 75 square feet to, to do all the political signs you want, 75 square feet of signs. Your neighbor has their house for sale and has the house for sale sign, they get 75 square feet of political signs less whatever they're advertising their home is for sale.
They're not 75 square feet of political signs.
Okay, that's good, okay.
Square feet of signs.
We are gonna stay away from number, 'cause 75 square feet.
We already settled on that, and I think the idea is that that's the number. That's the number.
You want 75 one-square-foot signs?
No, it's aggregate. It's, it's.
It could be.
It could be, what she's saying.
That's what I'm saying, like, could it, I mean, would it be just as simple, I know we're, I want it simple, I really do.
Has to be temporary, by the way.
But 75 square feet, to, no more than total four signs or what, I just pulled four out of the air, but.
It used to be five. So it's the bermashave sort of thing, right? Every, you just keep.
I'm just, you know, trying to avoid 75.
Saying, is this really my, my career? Am I, am I reporting on this right now at a local conference?
Donna, are you saying it's, are you saying it's too big or?
Are you saying, it's 9/30?
He's just saying if, if we don't have a limit on the number of signs, somebody could have 75.
Somebody could have one sign that's eight by eight, or a little bit bigger. That's true, but it has to be a temporary sign.
What she's saying is.
But I'm saying it's the opposite. Like, someone could have 75 one-square-foot signs all over the place.
Is 75 one-square-foot signs more visually appealing or less visually appealing than 175 square-foot signs? That's the question.
Look, who's, anyway.
So that's.
75, you can look around the county. I know one of our prolific public speakers has, has, has put a particular focus on a particular business in the Hampton District. And the fact is, they have a bunch of signs, and they currently probably do add up to more than 75 square feet. But I wouldn't want to like, this goes back to the whole spirit of agriculture, apples, pears, blah, 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 all that stuff. You gotta have.
You got, well, don't forget, that's, that's not ag, that's commercial, that's highway commercial.
All right, ag is commercial, but still.
Well, that's.
Ag is commercial?
Inherently, you don't grow for kicks and giggles.
No, I'm just saying it's highway commercial, it's zoning, you're talking about, which we can zone.
No, no.
Oh, which one are you talking about?
It's in the right-of-way, so it doesn't.
Oh, you're talking about, oh, I thought you were talking about, I thought you were talking about the color.
Okay, so, so then, let's, I'm assuming that you don't want to have a separate amount for any of the other types of sign like construction activity or wayside stand, and that's fine. So this section, all these temporary signs, let us highlight them in the fact that one would not have to go into the office and seek a permit to put up a 32-square-foot sign for selling their house, which makes sense, we don't want to deal with that, for construction, the site being constructed by whatever company, or for a wayside stand. You don't have to come in and get a, you will have to come in and get a permit for other kinds of temporary signs. So if you want to exempt all signs smaller than a certain size, this is where we would do it, from having to do a permit.
I can also just want to say one thing, I would just be totally clear here. We just put up a sign at the brewery. I wrote to Michelle, and I said, Michelle, this is the sign, this is the size, what do I need to do? And she said, you know what you need? You need a permit. So I did the whole permitting process, and it was incredibly easy, and it was very quick. Cost a hundred bucks, but anybody that has an issue and they want a bigger sign, they can do it. So don't forget that. Like, all of these limitations we're putting on there, they can easily, we have an ability for somebody to just go to Michelle and say, hey, you gotta pay money, but you can do it. So.
And we don't want to deal with a million temporary pushing hate.
I don't think that that's gonna, yeah.
Yeah, so we want to carve those out. We don't want to go through.
And if somebody has a need for a big, you know, whatever.
Permanent signs, for sure. And there's some temporary signs and some level temporary sign we just don't want to care about.
Yeah, right.
And maybe it's all of them. I don't know, it's accommodatable.
I, I honestly thought that by putting a square foot limit and a duration limit in all zoning districts, we were absolving our county staff of any responsibility for issuing permits. It's like, here's your time limit, and if.
Here's your square footage.
Here's your square footage, and if Joe's, Joe's citizen drives by and for a year sees your stupid signs up that say whatever. Joy has no home here, or whatever.
Are you saying that, that somebody shouldn't be able to get a temporary sign permit for a little bit bigger?
No, I'm saying.
No, I was asking him.
Oh.
I'm saying that when we were talking last time about just like, where we started with your seasonal idea, and then we ended up like, all's on industrial, 75 square feet in the aggregate is allowed.
Yeah.
It's allowed. I don't, I never, I never thought, contemplated, considered that people would have to go get a permit.
There's a lot of permitted signs that are allowed. There are many by right uses across the county houses that are allowed. You still have to come get a permit to prove that the house is in the right place, it's the right size.
Or it is, it might, it might.
So, but we can, we can make it so all temporary signs are permit exempt. You don't have to fill out a piece of paper for temporary signs.
Yeah, that's the goal.
Yeah, that's, that's what I want, yeah.
Yeah, that is the goal.
This is getting super complicated.
But there is a category for somebody who wants a bigger one, right?
Political sign, right?
No, and, and mostly, I, I mean, I think I've said this over and over again. I, I want our, our agriculture, our fruit stands and farms, stores to be able to have the signs that they need to do to do business.
That's 75 square feet?
That's, that's the metric for me, and I, I think that that would permit everything that exists in the county currently. At the Summers, do you think that there would be any, and I don't need you to name names, but by and large, most businesses would be compliant with this.
As long as you take out the, the moving flapping signs, which a lot of people use that are not going to be allowed, I think.
Um, that's, so what section were we just talking about? It was like all these extra loads, are we just deleting that whole?
No, all, all these specials, particular ones, that'll collapse just into one that basically says temporary signs. Temp, temporary signs.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Here. No sign shall be erected, displayed without a current or valid permit issued by the zoning administrator, provided however that no such permit shall be required for temporary signs.
Good.
Okay, makes it easy.
Yeah, we don't want to get into that.
Okay.
We're setting up an expectation that we're not, we don't want, we don't want people to junk up their properties.
Yes, it'll say temporary signs, but you have to, you have to meet the requirements of 170101, which says 75 square feet, 90, 120, first day of display.
We didn't want like a bunch of bureaucracy to.
Right, oh, absolutely. We want to keep it simple.
I can't tell you, I don't, well, Michelle can tell you the last time she's written a permit for a temporary sign.
Never.
Yeah, never.
Okay.
There you go.
Uh, do you want to point out another temporary sign, which is a little bit odd, because it's in the right-of-way when generally we don't, zoning doesn't apply in the right-of-way. But it's identified here to make clear that when they show up, they're okay. And that is over street banners when a governmental, nonprofit, or civic organization obtains a single-use permit from Vida to their process.
Yeah, good call.
Okay? In the off-premise of signs section, we'll get to that, but it does reference temporary signs. So the size and everything would refer back to 170101, which is the 75 square feet, blah, 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 okay? All right, then the next, in, then in resource preservation and residential zones, so ag conservation, all the residential zones. This is, this, this section and the next section that talks about commercial and industrials, where we define what you can do for a permanent sign in those zoning districts, okay? And so there was a disconnect here before. The maximum amount of signage allowed in a residential, resource preservation or residential zone was 32 square feet, permanent sign. Aggregate. And there was a big, well, the question was, well, does that include, what if, does temporary take up some of my 32 square feet? Does it distinct, is it separate? And I'm viewing all this discussion, is it separate? Right? So other than temporary signs, the total maximum level sign per lot parcel in these districts is 32, and we can eventually get to that if we want to.
Do we want the 12-foot in height?
That's for a permanent sign, so I think that's similar to what it is now. But just, the point here is that you get 32 square feet of permanent sign, this is the church in a residential zone, or whatever it is, 32 square feet. Plus, that's permanent sign, plus you get temporary signs.
Yeah.
And they're mutually exclusive on those, on the areas.
Yeah, and I can think, like, Paul and Cookie Baldwin, I think that that's, I mean.
And that's commercial.
Yeah.
So, I, I put that green. So total sign area permitted includes, does not include temporary signs present on the parcel, so. In a commercial, the amount of square footage you're allowed is 75 square feet or more, depending on your frontage. So do you want them to be able to have 75 square feet of permanent signage and 75 square feet of temporary signage?
32 square feet, I thought it says.
Uh, in 170107, now, we skipped down to commercial.
Yeah, I wanted to say for 170106, I, I would, I would be agreeable, usually in residential village, those are smaller lots. Usually, what, quarter, half acre, less than an acre lot?
That's one acre minimum.
Yeah, residential, residential, I imagine you'd see a, a spectrum of acreage associated with that. Rural residential is what, your minimum five acres? And then mobile home park, is there an acreage associated with that?
F, I, um, well, I mean, we only have one, and you know where it is.
Yeah. I just wonder if there's.
It doesn't matter what the.
If there's any value in, in lowering the square footage slightly based on the size of the lot.
So the, the.
You mean for temporary signs?
Or. Within the combination of the two, and I do think that the 32-square-foot of permanent sign makes more sense. I'm not sure if, maybe we want to lower the other to 50 instead of 70. I mean, that's a lot of, that's a lot of signage on a small lot.
I guess.
Anyway, I don't want to get too in the weeds, I'm sorry.
Well, it's okay. My only concern is that I just think that a lot of our citizens really love putting up political signs. And I would just hate to have in Sperryville, like, this person gets two big plywood signs and then this person does not, because they're lots smaller.
Yeah, I mean, you could get in.
I, I just would, I would, I would like just say, hey, everybody gets this amount and let, less regulation and let neighbors work it out or fight.
So in village, commercial, it's very good. I mean, you can put 75 square feet of sign up, I don't know where you're gonna put it, because you don't have 75 square foot of frontage. I mean, it's just like, there's no there there.
I just, I think we just keep striving for some total simplicity.
Yeah, and sort of let everybody have.
Okay, so, so commercial does get a lot more signage, and if you have a big, long building, you even get more. And if you're far away, and so the question still stands. Temporary is in addition to whatever permanent they can get, even though it's a.
I think so.
Okay?
Also, I should just say that I think that what you and Mr. Goff did, which is that just if we look at what's going on now, you know, I think that we can, we can, I, I think that I can feel comfortable in that people, you know, self-regulate to an extent in a way that I think helps to keep the county pretty good.
Okay.
Um, okay, good.
Yeah, and this just says, in commercial, you're allowed to have temporary signs and a bunch of other kinds. I know that's important. Do you want to tackle the commercial zone animated signs now or another time? Do you, do you want to allow them? This was not blinky signs, but wind-driven signs in commercial.
I've heard that people like them.
Open flag.
The only thing that I've heard from businesses, and I've talked to only two, that they said, please let us keep them.
Open and closed flag are open flag anyway, I think it's.
Well, we don't get to tell you what your flag says.
Right.
But we can, we can put them in a, a, a box that says you can have a wind-driven thing on a pole that's no larger than three by five, and try to steer them away. that's no larger than three by five, uh, and try to steer them away from the feather flag, which is taller and bigger. When Art and I did this before, we came up with the wording here based on what we saw out there and typical heights that, of these feather flags that you can buy. But all of the open flags and feather flags that you see today are illegal, period.
So how many square footage of the feather, feather flags?
They're like, up to fifteen feet tall by usually about two feet.
So thirty, so two, okay.
But that's the biggest one, those are the biggest ones.
So you could have maybe two of them. I, 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 I just think, okay, I've talked to two businesses who want them, but that would go into their seventy-five square feet of.
That, so, so that is another question, does that go into their seventy-five square feet?
I would just say yes, I mean, if, if businesses want it, and.
Definitely, yeah, it would definitely go into that seventy-five.
The government regulating it and saying, no, you don't, and if, we're talking about like two of them.
What do they want?
Just they like the feather flags, I've talked to two businesses that say they like them, whether they, I'm just, this is just anecdotal, this is just what they told me, and they said, please don't take them away.
No, I, yeah, the, the businesses, I've, one that spoke loud, most, the loudest to me, said it was a safety issue for them, that people could, that there, that flag, people could see them and knew where they turned. And they said what would happen otherwise, people would go by, pass them, and then they're trying to turn around in our little roads, and then they're coming back, so.
Okay, so I can tweak language to make sure it's not in, this isn't in addition to your commercial allotment, this is part of your commercial allotment.
I would just.
These are all, and this is, these are only allowed in commercial general, commercial highway, and industrial, not village commercial, not residential, not ag or conservation.
And a flag that is not, doesn't have geographically specific things on it isn't an animated sign.
Flags are kind of exempted as a category, uh, uh, government flags.
Yeah, but non-government flags are handmade signs.
Yep.
Yeah, that's, that's my point, is.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I think for these feather flags, did I, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I think that these should not be counted for the total square footage, because it's inherent, to me, in these kinds of businesses located in the commercial zones, that generally people, there's, um, already quite a bit going on, a pretty good rate of speed. It's commercial zoning, so you've recognized that businesses are trying to attract patrons in that area. And this is an elevated level of being able to track, to attract attention over and above what's typically permitted. That's, that's why, how I envisioned these, I didn't envision these instead of, I envisioned these in addition to. And, and there are places in, in Piedmont District that fly these and have large road frontage. And really, seventy-five square feet for those businesses is not a lot of signage.
Well, I, I, Michelle and I can tell you that most commercial businesses will consume the entirety of their seventy-five square feet for their permanent sign, which then, if it is included, they're not allowed to do this. Right?
Right.
They're, they're, when they set up shop, they're getting the maximum they can possibly get, because more is better. And then, once they do that, then they'd be kind of backed into not being able to do these. Now, it can consume part of your temporary sign allotment, your seventy-five square feet. You can have up to fifty square feet of these flappy things, which consumes what if your seventy-five square feet, then maybe, that makes sense.
I think flappy things should.
Flappy things. Not blinky things, flappy.
Alright, I'm reading the room, I'm moving on.
Alright, so.
We're there.
We're done?
Almost.
Just keep it simple.
This is, this is, then, very effective, I think, for doing this.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, okay, so can we put a pin in this?
Wow.
I think so.
Okay, alright.
Next time we talk about signs, we'll talk about another part of signs.
Okay, good.
Okay, can we talk about what we're gonna talk about next month, so we know, so we can think about it? What do you guys wanna tackle, is it on there?
Off-premise signs, I would suggest.
Off-premise signs, okay.
Next on the list. Yeah, that's what's next on the list, just going.
Yeah, yeah.
Yay.
This is good, we're making progress. We won't make it to twenty twenty-five, well, we will, without having done this.
It's been ten years since we've been over, okay.
Alright, so we're now on.
I promise you, you won't be last.
Transient lodging zoning ordinance.
It, this is relatively simple, um, Gary, can you, I can't seem to pull it up, it seems to be linked. The RCC transient lodging twenty twenty-four revisions, November.
It, it's, it's attached below, it's just red there.
Oh, okay. I don't see it attached below.
The final attachment?
Oh, I'm so sorry. This is language that, um, the planning commission's been working on, and as I mentioned earlier, the impetus for this is, was that kind of eco-retreat application, which was fortunately withdrawn.
Woodward Road, that one?
That one, and then the other impetus for it was, um, uh, the text amendment request, which did not make it to the board either. Good job planning commission on both of those things.
For the tourist homes?
Um, to aware the tour, about tourist homes, uh, on, on, uh, certain road types.
Yeah, I told them not to be.
So, um, so what this basically does is, um, takes certain uses, namely the country end and conference center or resort out of conservation. It keeps, um, tent campgrounds in conservation, which was a conversation of the planning commission. And it unifies the road types.
The, the road requirements for these.
The road requirements, so it's, uh, you can't, someone couldn't apply and say, well, that's arbitrary and capricious, because you're, you're requiring this for a bet of my Airbnb, but you're not requiring it for a conference center or resort.
So it's taking the wording from one seventy sixty-six K that says you have to have a type-two road for a tourist home or bed and breakfast, and then applying it into country ends, retreats, or lodges, temp campgrounds, travel trailer park. Now, the travel trailer park was a unique one that used, say, a minimum pave width of twenty feet, because you're pulling a trailer behind you. Type-two road allows a single lane with passing zones.
Uh, the.
This is one you might wanna be additive rather than eliminate the, somehow, because.
Planning commission felt that we could vet the applications based on their own merits, as long as we had a uniform starting point. And then the other, the only other change was the one I mentioned earlier, on line eighty-two, the setback had been ten feet. No structure, campsite, or athletic facility shall be located closer than ten feet to any lot line, and it really seemed like a typo, and it should be a hundred, just like all the other setbacks.
Okay.
So it's just cleanup, it's just cleanup, trying to protect us legally, trying to get the language to line up, and, um, avoid possible future applications that we really don't want. So we'll, um, likely advertise this for public hearing at the planning commission for December.
Yeah, I would like Art and I to have a shot, a reading through it before you guys do a public hearing.
Okay.
Um, which we could probably do for, when, when's your meeting?
This month? The twentieth.
We, we can probably do it before the meeting, and provide any comments, recommendations. If that works for you.
Sounds good.
This is a good idea, thank you for doing this.
Well, it just seemed like a good idea to clean it up, uh, while it was fresh in everyone's memory, and hopefully it will never happen again, but if it does, we'll be ready.
Yep, no, good idea, good idea. My guess is that there's probably things that are, uh, special exceptions in conservation, that I don't even know about.
There are way too many, way too many.
Yeah, yeah, that's part of, yeah, yeah. Thanks for doing that.
Absolutely.
Alright.
Russian, do you hear?
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much.